Good evening. The thirty-seventh meeting of this seventy-third term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to members of the press, as well as the general public and guests today, please ensure that you silence your electronic devices, cell phones, laptops, tablets, whatever, to ensure that we have a productive meeting. In lieu of invocation this evening, I will ask everyone to join the Baltimore City Council in a brief moment of quiet reflection. At this time, we will turn to our flag to state the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and law.
For our showcase this evening, we're joined by Mr. Kyle Pompey, Director of Youth Perspective Baltimore Photography Camp. Mr. Pompey is a professional photographer. Unfortunately, he went to Baltimore City College, and through this program, he teaches young folks tricks of the trade associated with photography. Mr. Pompey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. As Mr. Mosby said, I went to the greatest school in Baltimore City and across the land, but I also have an organization called Nice Shot Media House where I house a perspective Baltimore Photography Camp for the youth. And the camp is, I came up with the camp because I wanted to give the youth an opportunity to gain a lot of the necessary things that I've learned since I've gotten into photography. I got into photography when I was twenty-seven. I'm forty-two now. Up until twenty-seven, I didn't, I didn't have a goal. I was like a feather blowing in the wind. I didn't know what I wanted to do. When I got into photography, it started to make me hold myself more accountable for the things that I was doing, and let me slow down and just take in the world as I see it. It enabled me to tell my own story, and I feel like that's very important, especially with the youth. So starting at a young age, getting them into the habit of doing those things, you know, I felt like I got more gratification from that than anything else. My camp is a five, a five-week program that I do, and it's completely free. It's every summer, this is my fifth year doing it. I started in two thousand and eighteen. It's three days a week for five hours, and we go all around Baltimore to different places and take pictures. The part, the point of going around Baltimore and taking the pictures is, I take them to a lot of places that people don't usually know about, like Sherwood Gardens, Silburne Arboretum, places like that, especially places that black people don't know about. And, you know, that's a hundred percent of my demographic. So I try to enlighten them to places that they don't know, things that they may not been able, been privy to. And this is one of my students right here. She started with me in two thousand and seventeen. She got her LLC in two thousand and eighteen, and now she's one of my directors. So Kayla, if you'd come and say, tell them how your experience was.
So my, I'm sorry, can you hear me? My experience, it was good. I liked it. I enjoyed it. When I first started the camp, I, I didn't know I was gonna actually enjoy it. My dad was kinda like, he wanted me to do something, get out the house for the summer. So he made me write the essay, and I wrote the essay. I got in. And then during the summer, in the beginning, like I'm not, at first, I'm really shy and not really outgoing, and like some of the kids at the camp, they were like outgoing and stuff. So like I was kinda off to the side a lot, but as the weeks went on, I started to enjoy myself, and I like actually liked it, and I wanted to start, I wanted to take it serious. So in two thousand and eighteen, I got my LLC and started my own business where I take pictures for mostly events like proms and birthday parties. I had a wedding in two thousand and nineteen, which was my first wedding. So yeah, now I just, it's, it's not, it's not a job for me. It's like a hobby now. So I thank Kyle a lot for creating that opportunity for me.
So if you wanna, if you wanna follow our journey, you can go to our Instagram page, which is Nice Shot M H I, at Nice Shot, like that was a nice shot, Kyle. M H I at gmail dot com. I mean Instagram, on Instagram, sorry about that.
Say it one more time.
At N I C E S H O T M H I.
And do you have a?
Yeah, and in my bio, I have a link to like everything that you would need to know about the program. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
No, thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening, Kayla and Mr. Pompey. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the corollary.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would ask that the Journal Clerk reflect that council members Ramos and Glover are absent, and those absences are excused for this evening. We will now be, we will now proceed to the adoption of the journals. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the Journal of the July eleventh, twenty-twenty-two proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal is adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on, beginning on page two of the agenda. We'll now turn to bills being introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the first bill.
City Council Bill twenty-two zero-two-five-four, Office of Aging Independent Agency, for the purpose of establishing an office of aging as an independent agency, defining certain terms, providing for the appointment of the director of the office, establishing duties of the office, providing for the staff and budget of the office, requiring the adoption of certain rules and regulations, requiring the office to submit an annual report to the mayor and city council, establishing the Commission on Aging to advise and collaborate with the office, providing for the appointment, structure, and governance of the Commission, requiring the Commission to submit an annual report to the director, and requiring Commission members, the director, and other staff of the office to file financial disclosures under the Ethics Code. Sponsors are Councilmember Cohen, Vice President Middleton, Councilmember Ramos, and Chair McCray.
At this time, I'd like to yield the floor to the gentlemen in the First District. Councilman Cohen, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and I want to take a brief moment to really thank my colleague, Council Vice President Middleton, for not only her partnership on this legislation, but her steadfast leadership when it comes to supporting our older adults. So thank you for that. Today, I am proud to introduce a bill that would create the Office of Aging. Our elders deserve our respect, and they deserve their own cabinet-level office. This office will work hand in glove with the Commission on Aging to improve how we treat older adults in Baltimore. It will coordinate with agencies like housing, law enforcement, and health to make sure our seniors are safe and protected, but most importantly, this office will listen to the voices of our elders and be accountable to them. Let me be clear, I would not be here without the love of my grandmother. My grandma marched for civil rights. She started a summer camp for blind children. She loved to talk politics, and she poured that love into me. Growing up, I struggled with a learning disability. There were moments when my self-esteem suffered and my parents became discouraged. During those difficult times, there was one consistent presence lifting me up, holding me accountable, and reminding me of my own intelligence. That was my grandmother. Because of her fierce determination and refusal to give up, I became a teacher, I started a nonprofit, and I now am proud to serve with my great colleagues on the Baltimore City Council. All across Baltimore, we hear the same concerns in our senior centers and on our streets. Older adults feel like they've been discarded and left behind. They raise concerns about the poor conditions of many of our senior housing buildings. They talk about struggles with transportation, with fresh food access, with health and mental health care, with safety and recreation. They suffer disproportionately during the pandemic, both physically and in terms of mental health. I want to be clear, and we want to be clear, this office is not a knock on the Division of Aging in the Health Department. That division does great work, but Vice President Middleton and I believe we must do more, and we must do it now. In the past, we had a standalone office. We need to bring it back. Let me conclude by saying, the way we treat our seniors and our kids says a lot about our values as a city and as a society. Right now, we're falling short. We owe them more than we can ever repay. So to my grandma and to all the elders that are looking down on us from heaven, this office represents a commitment to build something worthy of your greatness. Thank you.
At this time, I see the hand raised of Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Burnett, Chairman Conway, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Torrance, Councilman Bullock, to be added as co-sponsors of this bill. Madam Vice President, would you like to speak on behalf of this bill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, just a short little speech. I, first of all, wanna thank you, Mr. President, for continuing to, I guess, assign and keep me in the, as a representative for the council on the Commission of Aging. I started this council as an older adult, and I am growing into older adulthood. This bill really is, is a bill that we all, we think, and I'm sure the entire council agrees, it's really, the time is now to really take our older adults in Baltimore City seriously, and they really need a separate office. This is not to put any shame or pain with any agency that helps older adults, and that, in a sense, is part of the, of the problem. Everything is spread out all over. Housing deals with housing for older adults. You know, the Health Department has their piece. Everything is spread out. Some services are happening, but not like they should, and we still have a number of older adults out there that are not being serviced, and they call us as council members. And the agencies should be handling this. The one agency should be handling this. We have an Office of Family and Children's Success. For some reason, our, it, we see it. We have, I can mention two counties that surround us. Baltimore County and Howard County have separate agencies. Why don't we have a separate agency? I have not been convinced enough as a representative on the Commission. The Commission is doing wonderful things. Don't get me wrong, but it's the now, the time is now to take this to another level. Our seniors have been suffering before COVID, and things have gotten even worse. We just heard about Experience Corps, and I remember on the council when we had to fight before the budget session to save Experience Corps. It's, it, my boggles me that we're just finding out after the budget session that there was an announcement and problems with Experience Corps. These, this kind of stuff should not be happening. Experience Corps is an important piece of, of employment for our older adults. So I don't wanna have the hearing here, but this is just really important. We do have representatives that took their time to come here today, and older adults from various communities and organizations that are in total support of this. We're going to take our time and try to work with our mayor and the administration, but we are still gonna continue to move forward. This is a dire need, and I thank everyone for your support, and especially thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I echo the sentiments of the gentleman from the First District. This has been a decades-old fight for you, and to bring it back full circle is great. I'll ask the older adults that have joined for this bill, if you could please stand to be recognized. Thank you for your continued advocacy. This bill has been assigned to economic and community development. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the next bill.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-five-five, Arson Offender Registration, for the purpose of requiring an individual who has been convicted of a specified crime to regularly register certain information with the Police Commissioner for Baltimore City, specifying location, timing, content, and form of the registration, defining certain terms, and generally relating to arson offender registration. Sponsors are Councilmember Burnett, Bullock, Ramos, and Chair McCray.
Councilman Burnett, I yield the floor to you.
Mr. President and colleagues, over the last four years, there's been a series of concentrated fires intentionally set in neighborhoods across the city with an uptick, particularly in West Baltimore. During an investigation, investigational hearing held last year that examined this topic in greater detail, we learned that over the last decade, there have been approximately twenty-four-hundred cases of arson in Baltimore City. Currently in two thousand and twenty-two, there have been sixty-eight arsons committed, but only ten people have been arrested and charged. Arsons destroy more than just buildings. They devastate communities, resulting in the decline of economic development, increased insurance premiums, financial hardships for residents, loss of business revenue, decreased property values, and unfortunately, the loss of life in many instances. The United States Department of Justice states that the leading motives for arson are revenge, insurance fraud, vandalism, and the concealment of other violent crimes. The intended purpose of this legislation is to provide the police department with an investigative tool to help them solve open cases and to create a system that tracks and monitors offenders convicted of this violent crime. Arson is a citywide problem that calls for a citywide solution, and I would appreciate my colleagues' support, and I look forward to a thoughtful discussion on this topic, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Burnett. That bill has been assigned. Are there any additional co-sponsors? I see the hand raised of Madam Vice President, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Torrance, and Councilman Cohen. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. I'm sorry. And Councilman Dorsey, if we could please allow the record to reflect, Councilman Dorsey also is a co-sponsor. This bill's been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. Madam Clerk, two-five-six.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-five-six, Public Safety Apprenticeship Program Advisory Commission, for the purpose of defining certain terms, establishing the Baltimore City Public Safety Apprenticeship Program Advisory Commission, providing for the purpose, composition, and duties of the Commission, establishing terms, procedures, and duties of the Commission, and generally relating to the Baltimore City Public Safety Apprenticeship Program Advisory Commission. Sponsors are Councilmember Burnett, Ramos, and Chair McCray.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The body would like to yield the floor to the gentleman from the Eighth District.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank all of you, my colleagues, for passing the Public Safety Apprenticeship Bill. I think it's a huge deal. It was recently signed by the mayor and will go into effect this fall. One of the things that I learned through that hearing process was that as we have changes in leadership in the police department, fire department, there's also a change in prioritization of it. So this is an accountability mechanism, to have a oversight board ensure that the program is operating effectively, to ensure that young people are getting exposed to veterans of the department, that ideas are being incorporated into the curriculum that they're learning and the work that they're doing while in the apprenticeship program. And so I look forward to thoughtful discussion in committee. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember. Are there any additional co-sponsors for this bill? I see the hand raised of Councilman Dorsey, Madam Vice President, Councilman Torrance, and Councilman Cohen. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. We will now move on to resolutions being introduced for the first time in first reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first resolution.
City Council Resolution twenty-two dash zero-one-two-one-R, informational hearing twenty-two-two primary election irregularities, for the purpose of inviting the director of the Baltimore City Board of Elections and the director of the State Board of Elections to come before the council to detail the cause of voting irregularities during the twenty-two-two primary election, potential impacts these irregularities had on election results, and solutions to ensure that such errors do not happen again. Sponsor is Councilmember Ramos.
I think Councilman Burnett, you would like to speak on behalf of this bill? If you could please stand in the absence of Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you. She sent me a statement to read. Mr. President and colleagues, this resolution calls for an investigative hearing with the director of the Baltimore City Board of Elections and the State Board of Elections. In the two weeks before the primary election, there have been several irregularities that eroded the confidence in the voting system. My constituents and residents across the city have sent in problems that they have had. In some areas of the fourteenth district, voters received the correct mail-in ballots only to have the Board of Elections send a letter and a different ballot, which was incorrect. These voters had to have a third ballot sent to them to correct these errors, and the first two ballots were nullified. The confusion, especially for elders in the fourteenth district, was astonishing. In other areas of the district, people received an incorrect voter registration card for another district, and when going to the polling place or their normal polling place, they were met with confusion as to why they were there and often did not know to ask for the provisional ballot for their district. The last two examples happened along the boundaries of two legislative districts, but these boundaries did not change during the redistricting process. Other examples include confusion at the polling places, not enough judges, and in several polling places, no chief judge. So someone was assigned on the spot and expected to take on the role with no training. The missing flash drives that hit the news was just a fraction of the issues that were encountered. So during the hearing, we will explore these issues and any others that residents write us about. We will try to understand why these errors happened and how to avoid the errors next time. I realize the State Board is not compelled to come before us, but we will make the ask. I also know that this is not the first time that the city council in the past has called the BOE in front of us. Election irregularities are not new, and my colleagues before me have sought to get to the bottom of election issues before. I do want to thank everyone who showed up as an election judge, because that is a hard job. I want to thank the BOE staff that worked hard with me and other elected officials to resolve these irregularities as well. Your work to preserve the integrity of our elections is valued and appreciated, and I'm looking forward to the hearing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for reading that in. Are there any co-sponsors? I see the hand raised of Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman Porter, and Councilman Burnett. If we could please allow the record to reflect Councilman Burnett's name second. This bill has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. That's, that ends our session for bills being introduced as well as resolutions. And now, we're gonna turn a consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in section A of the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved and probably seconded. All is in favor, please say aye. And all is opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do so, I'd like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be on short titles for the duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles. The first committee we're gonna go to is Economic and Community Development. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in this first bill.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-one-nine-eight, City Property, naming the Baltimore City Health Department building to the Dr. Maxey T. Collier Health Department building.
The council would like to recognize the chairwoman of this committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-two dash oh-one-nine-eight was heard on July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All is in favor, please say aye. And all is opposed, please say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke Rule twelve dash one for same-day advance from second to third reader.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably seconded. To invoke Rule twelve dash one, at this time, we'll have to take roll call to vote on it. Madam Clerk.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray.
We have to actually vote.
Oh, President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen.
Just for the council edification, we have to vote on this, so please say aye or nay. Madam Clerk.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen.
Aye.
Chair McCray.
Yes.
Councilmember Dorsey.
Yes.
Chair Conway.
Aye.
Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Torrance.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnett.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock.
Aye.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Chair Costello.
Aye.
Chair Stokes.
Yes.
Councilmember Glover and Ramos are absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The ayes have it. The bill moves to third reader today. Madam Clerk, if you could read in twenty-two dash two-one-three.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-one-three, Street Encroachment, four-two-zero, East Randall Street.
The body would like to recognize Vice President of the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-two dash oh-two-one-three was also heard on July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. The committee approved a technical amendment which was sent to council members. I move the amendment.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are approved.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, please say nay. The bill is approved as amended and will be printed for third reading. Madam Vice President, you are up again. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in twenty-two dash two-one-five. Sorry about that.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-one-five, City Streets Closing Two Ten-Foot Alleyies.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Twenty-two dash oh-two-one-five was also heard on July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. The committee approved a technical amendment. I move the amendment.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all is opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendment is approved.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all is opposed, please say nay. The bill is approved as amended.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-one-six, City Property Grant of Easement.
The council would like to recognize Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Twenty-two dash oh-two-one-six was also heard on July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, please say nay. The bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. Now, Madam Clerk, two-four-four, please.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-four-four, City Streets Closing Three Ten-Foot Alleyies.
The body would like to recognize Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. And twenty-two dash oh-two-four-four was also heard on July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all is opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Vice President.
And I also move to invoke Rule twelve dash one for same-day advance from second to third reader.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All, actually, we have to do roll call. Madam Clerk.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen.
Aye.
Chair McCray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dorsey.
Aye.
Chair Conway.
Aye.
Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Torrance.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnett.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock.
Aye.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Chair Costello.
Aye.
Chair Stokes.
Yes.
Councilmember Glover and Ramos are absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The ayes have it, the bills will move today for third reading. We're gonna go to Rules and Oversight next. Madam Clerk, if you could read in twenty-two dash two-three-eight.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-three-eight, Charter Amendment, Inspector General Advisory Board.
The body would like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held a hearing on this bill on July twenty-first. There are amendments on your desks, and I would like to move the amendments favorable.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Do you have an issue with the motion?
I have to recognize, Mr. President.
At this point, I would, before I recognize, I wanna make sure, do you have an issue with the motion that's on the floor?
I want to debate whether it matters.
There's a motion on the floor, so we're gonna take the motion.
Mr. President, my understanding is a move or a request that has the motion as made in second.
So that's why I said, you have some unreadiness associated with the motion.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I asked you. If you could, at this point, we recognize Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm concerned about the amendments on this bill, increasing the size of the board to something that is potentially untenable. Eleven members is a bordering on unwieldy size advisory board, I believe. Further, there are things that, in these amendments, that the Law Department has explicitly said previously, we do not have the authority to do, in particular, to name ex officio members from outside of city government to serve on a board. The Law Department has forcefully opined that we do not have the authority to do, and I believe that there is a good possibility that this has been adopted or approved in error, that by the, approved by the Law Department in error, as they have said to the contrary before. And I'm afraid that, you know, the Law Department says in certain cases, look, the city council is free to enact certain things. We just won't be able to implement them if we don't have the legal authority to do so. to sit on this board ex officio that we do not have the right to do. Further, well, that is my comment on the amendment here. I will comment on the bill as a whole after a vote has been taken on the amendments. Thank you.
No, thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Is there any additional unreadiness associated with the amendments on members' desks? Hearing and seeing no additional unreadiness, I believe we have a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Is that accurate? For the record to reflect, I believe you provided the motion. Who provided the second? Chairman Conway provided the second. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. Please let the motion to reflect that we have a vote of 12 to 1. Two are absent. The one nay vote is Councilman Dorsey. At this time, I'd like to recognize Chairman of the committee, Chairman Schleifer.
I'd like to move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved, is it second? It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there some unreadiness with this? Chairman Schleifer, if you could please hold on for a second. At this time, the body would like to recognize Councilman Dorsey. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I think there may be some concern over the makeup of the board of the advisor, the advisory board for the Inspector General's office. I think it's too early to tell. The advisory board has met once, or, you know, one cycle. They're supposed to meet every year to review the performance of the office and the budget request of the office. That has happened for exactly one budget cycle. I think that that's a premature scale for judging that it's not working somehow and that it needs to be changed. And I think that this would be better left to the next ballot in 2024, when we have had a chance to show that the, more of how the board can function. And so that's... And for the reasons that I stated before about the amendments, I think it's substituting a small and functional focus board for something that's potentially unwieldy and potentially not legal. So, thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Is there any additional unreadiness before we go to the motion? Chairman Schleifer, I believe we still have a comment from, is this related to the motion? At this time, the board would like to recognize Councilman Cohen.
Thanks, President. Due respect, my colleagues' analysis. I would argue, though, that I think it is incredibly important to have an independent board that is holding oversight over our inspector general. We know this is an extremely important office that roots out fraud, waste, and abuse, and I do believe it is appropriate to have as much independence as possible. I do believe it's in line with best practices, and so I would, will offer my support.
Thank you. At this time, is there any issue or unreadiness associated with the motion that is on the floor? I believe it was moved by Chairman Schleifer and seconded by Chairman Conway. Without hearing or seeing any additional unreadiness, we'll entertain a vote. So it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Again, please let the record to reflect, there's a 12 to 1 vote. Two are absent, the one being nay by Councilmember Dorsey. At this time, the bill will be printed for third, no. We are on... At this time, I'm going to go back to Chairman Schleifer. The bill will be printed for third reading, but we're going to do a double reading. The reason, just to reflect transparency to general public, there are statutory requirements in order for us to get it on the November ballot that it has to pass from the Baltimore City Council and be signed into law or passed into law by a certain time period. So that's why we're going to double read this bill tonight. With that, I'm going to call back Chairman Schleifer.
I'd like to move to invoke Rule 12-1 to advance this matter from second to third reader at the same meeting.
Is there a second? There's a second. At this time, we're going to do roll call.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover and Ramos are absent.
Thank you. The ayes have it, the bill moves to third reading today. Next up, we're going to go to 22-247. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0247, Obstructing Street Racing or Stunt Driving.
Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee also heard this bill on July 21st. There are no amendments, and I'd like to move the bill favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all opposed, please say nay. Please allow the record to reflect that there is, again, a 12 to 1 vote with two absences, the one nay being Councilman Dorsey. This bill will be printed for third reading. Thank you, Chairman Schleifer. Madam Clerk, 22-212.
City Council Bill 22-0212, Residential Retention Tax Credit Amendment.
The body would like to recognize sponsors of this bill as well as Chair of Ways and Means. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have floor amendments on our members' desks. These amendments reflect additional conversations between myself, your staff, the Law Department, and the Finance Department that occurred after the committee heard this bill. These amendments will make the bill easier to implement and are responsive to the feedback brought by the mayor's administration at the bill hearing. Amendment number one changes the date by which those previously eligible for the credit who have not applied can now do so up until May 31st of 2023. Amendment number two is technical. Amendment number three clarifies and simplifies how an applicant can verify their eligibility for the credit. Amendments number four and five clarify how those previously eligible who have not received the credit may do so. And finally, amendment number six extends the effective date of the bill to 180 days from the enactment date to give the Department of Finance adequate time to revive the program. Mr. President, I move the amendments.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. For the record, we moved six amendments as a package, so amendment one through six. That's on the council members' desk. With that, I turn back to Chair Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. We turn now to bills on third reading for final passage that require invocation of City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement. The clerk will read the bill and call the roll. The first bill is 22-198. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0198, City Property, Naming the Baltimore City Health Department Building to the Dr. Max C.T. Collier Health Department Building. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover and Ramos are absent.
Thank you, this bill is approved. Madam Clerk, 22-238.
City Council Bill 22-0238, Charter Amendment, Inspector General Advisory Board. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover and Ramos are absent.
This bill is approved. As discussed earlier, I would like to publicly thank Councilwoman Ramos, she's not here tonight, for her tenacity to help move this bill through to ensure that we made the deadline associated with the general election ballot. Her leadership in working with the Law Department, the administration, and colleagues is well reflected on this bill. Madam Clerk, if you could please go to 22-244.
City Council Bill 22-0244, City Streets Closing Three Ten-Foot Alleyies. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover and Ramos are absent.
This bill is approved. We'll turn now to bills on third reading for final passage. The clerk, if you could please read in the first bill.
City Council Bill 22-0211, City Employees and Retirees Healthcare Reform. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover and Ramos are absent.
This bill is approved. For members of leaders in labor as well as city employees who are here in support of the bill, if you could please rise to be recognized at this time. Thank you for your leadership on this particular issue. This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, if we could go to 22-230.
City Council Bill 22-0230, Bond Issue, Public Infrastructure Loan, $72 Million. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover and Ramos are absent.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 22-0231, Bond Issue, Community and Economic Development Loan, $36 Million. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover and Ramos are absent.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 22-0232, Bond Issue, School Loan, $38 Million. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover and Ramos are absent.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 22-0233, Bond Issue, Affordable Housing Loan, $14 Million. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover and Ramos are absent.
This bill is approved. Now, we're going to turn to committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear a committee call, please proceed with any announcements from your committee. First committee up, we're going to go to Economic, Community Development. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic and Community Development Committee would like to announce the following hearings, which will be held in City Council Chambers at City Hall at 2:20 p.m. Bill number 22-0228, Midtown Community Benefits District Amendment. Sponsor, Councilman Costello. On September, and that was August 9th, 2022. On September 13th, 2022, we'll hear two bills. The first one is at 2:01 p.m. That's Bill number 22-2, let me start over, 22-0221, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R7 Zone District Variance, and that's 2315 Utah Place. Sponsor, Councilman Torrance. Also, on September 13th, 2022, at 2:02 p.m., we will hear Bill Number 22-0246, and that's the York Road Business Improvement District Establishment. Sponsor, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next, we're going to go to Education, Workforce, and Youth. Thank you, Chairman Stokes. Next up, Health, Environment, and Technology. Chairwoman McCray. Thank you, Chairwoman McCray. Next up, Public Safety, Government Operations. Thank you, Chairman Conway. Next, Rules and Legislative Oversight. Thank you, Chairman Schleifer. And last but not least, Ways and Means. Thank you, Chairman Costello. Now, we're going to move to regular announcements. Members, please wait to be recognized if you have any regular announcements. Hearing and seeing none, there's no regular announcements. At this point, I would like to recognize Vice President Middleton to close this out.
The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, August 15th, 2022, here in Council Chambers at 5:00 p.m. And may we have a moment of silence for Mr. Vernon Sims, as most of us know, was the Chief of Staff for Elijah Cummings. And we also need to continue to have a moment of silence for the now 202 victims and families of homicide in our city and also our continued opioid epidemic and COVID pandemic.
Thank you. There being no new business before this test, this concludes the 37th meeting of your 73rd term of this Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.